Are we, are we ready? Is this coming?
Yes, you're live.
We've got a countdown.
Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Roanoke City Council Regular Session, June 1st, 2020, 2:00 PM. Participation by electronic communication will be held today pursuant to Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Section 2.2-3708.2, Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Ordinance Number 41703032720 and Resolution Number 41704032720. I will at this time ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Osborne?
She's here.
She's, she's here. She may not have, maybe unmuted.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. At this time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Best Fitch to lead us in the invocation, followed by my leading and the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Councilmember Best Fitch.
Let us pray. It is with humble hearts and gratitude that we bow before the source of all it is this afternoon. We are so thankful for the many blessings we are privileged to enjoy. We ask forgiveness for all those areas where we have fallen short in guidance as we strive to do ever better as we move forward. May we all embrace each opportunity to come together, to work together, to make progress together. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pardon me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's council meeting, this afternoon's council meeting, will be televised live and replayed on RB TV Channel 3 on Thursday, June 20th, June 4th, at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, June 6th, at 4:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Each council member has access to the Zoom, access to the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this proceeding. The city has provided the public with information to follow the public access to observe this regular session through live broadcast on RB TV, live streaming on Facebook, and posted on YouTube. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, May 28th, 2020. The city staff, including the city manager, the city clerk, city attorney, and technical forensics.
... on RB TV. Live streaming on Facebook and posted on YouTube. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, May 28th, 2020. The city staff, including the city manager, the city clerk, city attorney, and technical forensics on RB TV.
All right. I just want to be noted, Madam Clerk, that we're having some problems, audio problems, but I'll continue, continue on. Everybody that is present here in the council chamber and participating in this regular session. To facilitate the process today, to ensure that all council members and the public can follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion, to first state the member's name, then make the motion. At this time, I ask members whether they have any questions about this process. If not, I ask the city manager to advise if he has any comments. Item number two is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none. And item number three is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And based upon Executive Order 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 12th, 2020, amended Executive Order Number 53 on April 15th, 2020, Executive Order 55 issued by Governor Northam on March 30th, 2020, and as amended, Executive Order Number 61 issued by Governor Northam on May 8th, 2020, amended 28 to House Bill 29, adopted April 22nd, 2020, Genico Section 2.2-3708.2, Genico Section 15.2-1413, Ordinance Number 41703032720. And Resolution Number 41704032720. City Council will be conducting this regular session of City Council by electronic communication means without a quorum of City Council physically present in the council chambers and without the presence of members of the public in City Council chambers. In order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to City Council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of City Council conducted by electronic communication means, we're instructed to sign up by emailing or calling the city clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov and by phone at 540-853-2541 by 12:00 noon on today, June 1st. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address City Council by electronic means. And, Madam Clerk, I ask, are there any members or people, citizens, signed to speak to us today?
Two speakers. Our first speaker is Steve Ambrose.
Okay. Ms. Ambrose, welcome, City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Members of Council, for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. And I also wanted to thank Parks Recreation Director Michael Clark for providing a well-written and informative presentation of e-bikes earlier in the day today. I'm speaking towards the agenda item of the city's proposed public hearing for an ordinance that will ban e-bikes on our paved greenways. It is my belief that this public hearing is unnecessary, dangerous, and will disenfranchise a large segment of our e-bike users here in the Roanoke Valley. The public hearing is unnecessary because of the following reasons. Number one, the Commonwealth of Virginia has written e-bike laws that follow the guidelines of other jurisdictions in the southeast, such as West Virginia, Tennessee, and the District of Columbia. Similar laws have been widely adopted around the country and are meant to keep all greenway users safe. There is no reason for Roanoke to buck this trend in an attempt to regulate e-bikes in a different manner. And number two, currently, the majority of other multi-use pathways in our region allow the use of e-bikes. Places like the City of Harrisonburg, Bedford County Trails, and the Huckleberry Trail in Blacksburg all allow for the use of e-bikes. The Capital Trail in Richmond sees hundreds of users each day and allows for the use of e-bikes on its trail. A ban on e-bikes and the enforcement of such ban would be a waste of resources that can be better utilized on connecting and expanding our greenways to avoid congestion. The public hearing is dangerous because we are currently fighting a widespread and deadly pandemic. Venturing into public is not only potentially hazardous, it is currently against the statewide state home order. As it is right now, the City Council meeting is being held in a virtual manner to prevent COVID transmission. The state's home order is scheduled to expire on June 10th, but social distancing guidelines as well as group size limits will remain in place. A public hearing during a pandemic is simply not a prudent idea. If this meeting is held on June 15th, it will likely disenfranchise a large portion of our valley's e-bike users. Many of them are older, recovering from injury, or have health conditions preventing them from riding a traditional bicycle, characteristics that also prevent them from attending a public hearing during a pandemic. Hosting a public hearing during a pandemic where the stakeholders are unable to attend is troubling and could expose the city to unnecessary legal ramifications. So with that, I urge you, Members of Council, to vote against this public hearing and to let the state regulations remain in place. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ambrose. And we will refer your comment to a city manager who will respond to you with regards to your request.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
This is, this is Michelle Davis.
Uh-oh, all right.
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure, and I know Stephen personally, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear earlier and that Stephen knew too, that any public hearing, if it were to be held, would be held, obviously, in accordance with guidelines that we are following from the state of Virginia. And therefore, if meeting in a assembled body is not possible or is not recommended due to health guidelines, it would be held electronically, just like the public hearing is being held right now and public comments are being held right now. So, Stephen, I just wanted to make sure you knew that that was not something, a public hearing does not necessarily mean it has to happen in council chambers, and we certainly, as council, if we choose to move in that direction, would ensure the health and safety of all concerned citizens and likely will be providing a call-in option for a while to come. So, thank you for addressing that point and for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ken McLeod.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of City Council for hearing me today. I joined hundreds of members of the Roanoke community on Saturday in a peaceful march from Washington Park to the Roanoke Police Department to demand that Black Lives Matter. My experience during that march was that the tactics and communications of the police increased tensions and provided more pathways to escalation than de-escalation. I want to thank the leaders of the march for encouraging peaceful protest throughout the march. The city of Roanoke's current comprehensive planning process has many laudable goals to create interwoven equity, including removing elements of institutional and structural bias and leading community healing. Now is the time to act on those goals and show that the city and its police will lead with healing rather than confrontation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. There are no other speakers. We'll move down to item number four on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. White Boyd, so moved. June Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, we're going down. Pardon me a few minutes, I'm using my computer, then I'm on my iPad, and I just hit a button and it just zipped up there, so just bear with me for a second. We are now at item number five, which is the public hearings. 5A is consideration of proposed amendments to the city's 2019 HUD action plan. Robert S. Cowell, Jr., City Manager, is the spokesperson, and I will open the public hearing. In order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to City Council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session by council, conducted by... Am I going back? I think I'm still on top. Citizens wishing to address the City Council during a regular session of City Council conducted by electronic communication means, we're instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov, and the number is 540-853-2541 by 12:00 noon on today, June 1st. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address City Council by electronic communication means. In addition to this public hearing, citizens may provide comments regarding proposed amendments to the city's 2019 HUD annual action plan during the comment period, which ends June 12th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Citizens may submit comments during the comment period to Keith Holland, Community Resources Administrator, by mail, or an email at keith.holland@roanokeva.gov, or telephone on him at 540-853-6404, received prior to June 12th at 5:00 PM. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
All right, with that being said, I will close the public hearing. And we'll now go to item number six, which is petitions and communication. We have none. Item number seven is reports of the city officers and comments of the city manager. And these are the items recommended for action. Item number one, which is 7A1, acceptance of the FY 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for necessary equipment and supplies for the city's swift water rescue team. There is a resolution.
Ms. White Boyd, move the resolution. Michelle Davis, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the FY 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and authorizing execution of required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, are there any comments by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the votes are unanimous and the resolution passes. I have a budget ordinance. I need a motion on the budget.
June Osborne, move the budget ordinance. Michelle Davis, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for equipment and supplies for the regional swift water flood rescue team, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2019-2020 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any comments or questions by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne? Ms. Osborne? I believe you are on mute.
Present.
Ms. Price? Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance. Can we check and see who's on and who's not on? I see Ms. Osborne's picture. Is she... Is her audio on or off? Can you hear me?
Mayor Lee, I'm sorry.
Okay, I understand. We'll hope that we can work on the audio part of that session today. Madam Clerk, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I didn't get a sound from June or Ms. Price. Did they vote yes or did they vote no?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Osborne? Okay, I don't get a sound from her.
Ms. Osborne, you can't hear us?
She's on mute. She's frozen.
She's on mute.
She's frozen.
Excuse me.
The vote at this point is six to zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk, what is, what is the next item on my computer? What item are we on, number two?
We're on 7A2.
Okay, this is the acceptance of the local emergency management performance grant from the Department of Emergency Management to support the fire EMS department. There's a resolution.
Mr. Best Fitch, move the resolution.
Second?
Michelle Davis, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
A resolution accepting the local emergency management performance grant to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, any questions or comments by council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous and the resolution passes. Thank you. Item number three is authorization of the proposed refunding by the city of Roanoke of general obligation bonds in connection with the project with the Western Virginia Regional Industrials Facility Authority, I'm sorry, the Regional Industrial Facility Authority. There is a resolution.
June Osborne, move the resolution. Ms. White Boyd, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the refinancing plan between the Virginia, the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority and Roanoke County, the City of Roanoke, and the City of Salem, authorizing City of Roanoke's refunding general obligation support of refunding by the Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute and test, respectively, the documents, authorizing the city manager to take such actions and execute such documents as necessary to implement, administer, and enforce such documents.
Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the vote is unanimous and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right, item number four is the adoption of a resolution affirming the declaration of a state of local emergency in connection with recent flooding in the city. There's a resolution.
Anita Price, move the resolution.
Go, Best Fitch, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution confirming the city manager's declaration of a local emergency, conferring emergency powers to the city manager as director of emergency management, authorizing the city manager to make application for federal and state public assistance to deal with such emergency, designating a fiscal agent and agents for submission or finding information for the city, and calling up federal and state governments for assistance.
All right, any questions or comments by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes unanimously. Item number five is the appropriation of funds to implement and maintain an electronic summon system for the Roanoke Police Department. There's a budget ordinance.
Ms. White Boyd, move the ordinance. June Osborne, second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance refunding from the electronic summon assistance court fees rules as enacted by the General Assembly, Section 17.1-79.1, Code of Virginia, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2019-2020 grant fund appropriation, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, are there any comments or questions by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance unanimously passes. Thank you. All right, we're now down to comments by our city manager, and this time, I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Cowell for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only a couple of items. I do want to remind everyone that the plans, which are always, of course, subject to change, but right now, the plan is to begin a limited-phase reopening of the municipal building starting on next Monday, so that will be June 8th, and that begins with the Treasurer's Office and the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and that excludes DMV transactions, so those will not occur until later, and it will be under altered hours. So, basically, the And it will be under altered hours, so basically, the hours will be from eight thirty to, eight thirty AM until four PM. And of course, there will be a number of different practices put in place that limit the amount of folks that are able to enter the building at one time, how they'll actually be lined up and so on, in order to comply with the requirements of physical distancing, as well as the limits on the number of individuals. And all of that will be, there'll be signs to help folks. There'll be people in the lobby that will help folks as well address that. And on the city's website, under the Roanoke Star City Strong subpage, with the, again, on the website, there is, there are more detailed information, or is more detailed information regarding that reopening and what may also come next. So again, that's June eighth, Treasurer's Office, non-DMV, and the Commissioner of Revenue's beginning at eight thirty, Commissioner of Revenue beginning at eight thirty AM. Also, just wanted to update for a question that Councilmember Whiteboy had asked earlier regarding the stimulus funding, and I had made reference to the roughly eight point six five million that was the part of what the state was forwarding to us, and we did receive that month this afternoon. Those dollars have been received, and again, we'll talk about that a little bit later in the item regarding recovery funds. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boyd. We got it this afternoon. Well, hey, thank you, Ms. Cowell. We're now down to item number B one, which is the approval of amendments to the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission, amended and restated agreement. There's a resolution.
Bill Bestbitch moved the resolution.
Ms. Whiteboy, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution ratifying and agreeing that the City of Salem, Virginia, join the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission, providing the executive and amended and restated contract among the City, Roanoke County, the City of Salem, Virginia, and the Commission herein after described, and authorizing such other actions to implement, effectuate, and administer the amended and restated contract.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price. Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. All right, we're now down to item number nine, which is unfinished business. There's none. Item number ten is introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolution. Item, well, I recognize, recognize Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council. It's, you should have on your email an amended resolution. The amendment to the resolution just clarifies on page two that two groups of appointments will be made by city council rather than the city manager. One is the representative from the Latino-Latina community, and the others with regard to the institutional organizations. Excuse me, the, excuse me, strike that. The stakeholders from the eight different sectors. That's the only change, so if someone is prepared to move in second the amended resolution, that would be in order.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill Bestbitch. I move the amended resolution.
Vice Mayor Cobb, I second this.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you have the amended resolution?
A resolution establishing a task force to review the Star City Strong Response Recovery Resilience Framework, evaluate alternatives and recommendations to the city council for use of the Star City Strong Recovery Fund to support the recovery and resiliency of the community.
All right. Any questions or comments by members of council? Very none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution unanimously passes. Thank you. All right. We're going to move now down to, I'll go back to Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have, this is the first. These are first of two walk-on items. Item ten B is a resolution confirming the city manager's declaration of a local emergency with respect to the civil unrest that arose on Saturday, May twenty, May thirty, twenty twenty. You should have all received a copy via email earlier this afternoon. A motion would be in order and seconded, and then the clerk can read the title.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved by Vice Mayor Cobb.
Gina Osborne, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the title of paragraph?
A resolution confirming the city manager's declaration of a local emergency, conferring emergency powers in the city manager as the director of emergency management, authorizing the city manager to make application for federal and state public assistance to deal with such emergency, designating a fiscal agent and an agent for submission of financial information for the city, and calling upon the federal and state governments for assistance.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from members of council?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this is Bill Bestbitch. I wonder if the city manager might address for us some of the follow-up actions that are anticipated for this weekend's events. I know there are a number of people who felt like that the situation was handled extremely well, and there were also those who had some concerns about certain aspects of the response to the demonstration and to the disorderly conduct that occurred later in the evening. And I just wonder if the city manager might take a minute to kind of give us an idea of where we go from here.
Sure. Thank you. And relative to the state of emergency, it still currently remains in effect and probably will for a couple of days, and at some point, will take action to rescind it. So as was mentioned, there were actually probably several different events going on over the course of a few days. And some of those included, obviously, the rally at Washington Park and then the march that was earlier in the day, and then ultimately, some of the incidents that occurred at Walmart and Target and so on. Then those were followed by additional demonstrations at the, near downtown, near the police station in the evening, and then again yesterday as well. So the distinction about those is each of those will be looked at by the chief as individual and discreet activities to try to figure out what might we change, those types of things as well. In addition to that, of course, there were participating law enforcement officers from other jurisdictions, including Roanoke County, as well as the state, in addition to support from the city sheriff. So they likewise will be involved in those conversations as we go forward. And I know there's obviously quite a bit of Facebook chatter on multiple sides, as well as comments on media sites, and some of those include videos. So we'll be watching, we'll be looking at those as well. And of course, with whatever body cam footage is appropriate also, just to determine again if there are any areas for improvement or what went well and what may need to change in the future as we proceed forward. And again, right now, that effort will be led by Chief Roman as we move forward, and then the other jurisdictions themselves would be, as I mentioned, involved in that as well. Be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
If Mr. Bestbitch has done, I wanted to ask a question. Ms. Cowell, could you explain to the citizens what does that emergency order allow us to do? Because, and I understand that, I think they should know, especially in certain circumstances, that really helps us, if you will.
Yeah, and we've had the unfortunate distinction of being able to have a few of these over the last several months, so, you know, we still remain under the emergency order associated with the COVID response. And in that case, what that is allowing us to do is a couple of things. That's allowing us to access federal and state resources that may assist us in that effort in responding to COVID. And it also allows us to do a number of other activities, such as the meetings that we're having right now electronically and so on, where it's not simply safe in order to be able to conduct business with large gatherings. So that's kind of how that particular emergency declaration is benefiting us. In the case of the flood, which you just approved, likewise, that provided access to the potential for financial resources to be able to act and seek those to address that issue. In the most recent state of emergency associated with the events of the weekend, similarly, it actually allows us to access resources if necessary from the state. Probably the one distinction between the other two is it also allows the establishment of a curfew if necessary. We did not do that and do not anticipate doing that unless it becomes necessary, unlike some of the other communities in Virginia. We did not feel that that was necessary. So that was probably the significant difference between the other two local states of emergency. And of course, in this case and in the case of the COVID response, we are also, our local state of emergency is embedded in also a statewide state of emergency for both of those, and a federal state of emergency for the COVID response. So each of those themselves come with their own authority and their own actions. All of the executive orders, for example, that have been coming out of the governor's office are under the authority of those states of emergency that have been issued at the state level. So rather unusual to have all of those active at any one time, obviously. And also rather unusual to have floods and COVIDs and all those other kinds of things going on at the same time. So hopefully, that helps answer some of that.
Thank you. Let me comment that I'm, in regards to emergency orders, I had an opportunity to go out with the police and meet them at Walmart, Targets, Walmart and Target, and we lived there, and we went to Burlington Coat Factory, and then Sheets before we went back downtown. And at each phase of this, our police officers were in charge. They were there along with the state police, along with the officers from Roanoke County. And I thought they did an excellent job. We didn't know what to expect, and this group was moving around. And our officers, you know, they were tired, but they stood in line, stood there, and called the stores, and so I was proud of the effort that they put forth, proud of the things that they had to do because they had, and I don't have to tell you about the protests, the things that come about, not so much here, but there were people that were, they didn't know oftentimes what to expect from a crowd that's lined up right in front of them. But they held their own, and they seemed to be real organized, and I was just proud to see them in action to a degree on Saturday evening. Councilwoman Trish Whiteboy came up to Burlington Coat Factory and Targets and some other places, Sheets, and so we saw it in action, and I think our men and women of the police force did a good job, and I appreciate Chief Roman's leadership there. And that emergency order gave us, we could, gave us the opportunity and the authority to call in more help if we needed, because there were certain things that were unknown, or certain things that were unknown, and we didn't, we did not know, but I want to commend them for their work and effort, and there's some things that people said want to stray in. We're going to deal with those, but our men and women were on the forefront. They are protecting the businesses and people, and I was there very much. Okay.
Mayor, I did want to use the opportunity also to acknowledge the support received by some of those that you mentioned with certainly Roanoke County and the state police, as well as the Sheriff's Department in helping us in the response over the weekend. And also acknowledge that Chief Roman has already begun meeting with and talking with folks that were participating in the marches and in the rallies to kind of begin sort of that debriefing, if you will, to again, try to understand what went well and what we might want to do differently in the future. So certainly, I would encourage, as I know that the chief has as well, anyone that would like to talk with him further about the response certainly are encouraged to do so and reach out to him as we move forward with the, hopefully, the follow-up of what comes next. And some of you know, I have talked, well, all of you know, I've talked with each of you that in addition to this immediate response, this is not the day for it, but I think that relatively soon, we need to continue our conversation in the city about what comes beyond this particular event over the weekend, and how do we continue as a city to establish really responses to the underlying issues that were being raised in these marches all across the country. More about those as well. So I don't want to lose sight of the longer-term response and need in the community while we deal with the immediate challenges or the immediate discussions going on this weekend. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I really appreciate Mr. Cowell adding that last part to the statement. Some of you may be aware that there was a commentary piece in New York Times yesterday morning that talked about starting the year nineteen ninety-eight with the impeachment of a president, which we saw at the beginning of this year, twenty twenty. We've seen a pandemic like what was experienced in nineteen eighteen with what's commonly called the Spanish Flu, which is an unfortunate name because the flu did not originate in Spain and was not primarily confined to Spanish people or spread by Spanish people, but that's what it's known as. And in nineteen twenty-nine, we had a severe economic downturn that led to a long depression. And in nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and other years in that era, we experienced a lot of unrest and disorder related to racial issues. And here, we've experienced all of those things in a period of the first five months of this year, rather than over multiple years, as has happened in the past. And I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that the thing that concerns me the most is the fact that the issues that many of us struggled with and were concerned about in the mid-sixties were more than fifty years ago. And we are dealing with issues in our society right now that go back four hundred years. So there's a big part of me that just has to say shame on us that we haven't done more. Shame on us that we haven't worked harder to overcome some of these difficulties. And as Mr. Cowell just stated, this is not something that we're going to solve today, or that we can pass a resolution and make it all go away, but it is something that we need to address in a much more consistent, intentional, and committed manner than we have up to this point. So I'm hopeful that we're going to find ways. We had a gentleman that spoke with us earlier regarding the interwoven equity aspects of our revised comprehensive plan that is nearing its completion. And I've stated in the past that I think we need to find a group And I've stated in the past that I think we need to find a group that will. Make make sure that those. Concepts within the. Comprehensive plan continue to get all consideration as the plans about housing and economic development and all the rest. Perhaps this is a task for that group that hasn't even been identified yet, but that we need to be serious about finding some way. To say. We can't solve all the problems in the country, but we can work together to make things better in the city of Roanoke, Virginia. And by golly, it's time for us to just quit fooling around and get to work. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Best Bitch. Let me go to, I'm coming, let me go to Trish White-Bourne and then I'm coming to Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I I want to say that. I appreciate what the uh protesters were trying to say and 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 how they were trying to express themselves. Um, you know, I've spoken with a lot of people and I understand that they were, you know, they were peaceful. Um, they did a good job. I think, you know, some things went awry. Both ways, but I personally wanted to say, you know, I understand what they're what they're feeling. Um, I want to express my um sincere conglences. To the family. Of George Floyd. And. The countless others. Who have died uh at the hands of of uh police or or unjustly and other vigilantes that. Have, you know, taken it upon themselves. So my heart goes out to all those families and and believe me, you and and all of us know that that list is very long. Um, these are certainly difficult times for all of us. And. I have to say personally, I understand the frustrations. I've been talking to friends, family, both black and white. This is a very painful time. In our country right now and um, you know, we. A lot of people are dealing with it as best they can and and you know, it a lot, a lot of times it's by protesting. And so, you know, I I don't agree with the violence. And the hurting and all of that, but sometimes I understand that you have to do something. Me personally, I felt a little helpless this time. And I'm the activist, you know, I'm always wanting to do something, but I felt a little helpless. But I do want the the residents to know that that. As a. Member of Roanoke City Council, I think that I speak for all of us in saying that we want. Um, a a police force that understands these biases and um. And if they don't, you know, we want to make sure that they're trained to do that. I think we have a wonderful police chief. And a wonderful police force, but like Mr. Cal said, if there are areas. That need to be improved upon. I certainly think that um it's incumbent upon us, um just like Mr. Bill uh, Mr. Best Bitch said. We need to do it and we need to do it right away. We need to stop fooling around. With these issues because. This has gone on for decades and decades and decades. And I will say that I've not heard of anything personally happening here in Roanoke. But we are speaking as a community and as a country. And if nothing else, to support our country and. And somebody sent me a message the other day asking, would we consider sending a resolution or a card? To the family of George Floyd. In uh Minneapolis and and I don't know that um. Anybody would have a problem with that. I would certainly like to make that gesture and do that. So that everybody understands that we are with them, we understand what's going on and that we are going to move through this together. And. Now and not later. And I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Um. I, this. Weekend, um, I'm very proud of people who. Took a stand this weekend and said that they've had enough. Um, I think that this has been an incredibly difficult. Time for um, not only our city, but obviously for the entire nation. And I've spoken with some of the protest organizers, um, and I'm really. Proud of the folks who worked together to form a peaceful protest, to exercise their First Amendment rights. Um, and to let their voices be heard. Um, I'm concerned about violence. Um, I'm concerned about the. Violence of the oppressors. I'm concerned about the violence of. Those being oppressed and. I feel like we, I hope, are are reaching a point of sea change. In this nation. Um. And it seems, I spoke with Mr. Cal about this yesterday, um like a culmination of events. That um are coming to a head with people having been in their homes for COVID. Um, with a lot of pent up energy, a lot of pent up anger. And now the death of Mr. Floyd is creating. Energy and opportunity for people to really express. That they've had enough and and that we're not going to put up with this anymore. Um, it's, it's, I don't believe enough to say now's the time and we need to take action and. Um, I think we need. To comment on it, it can come from government. From working inside government when I got on council four years ago. Um, I had thought that we would be able to do more than we actually have the ability to do, if I'm being really honest. Um. And one of the things that. I think we do have an opportunity as the city of Roanoke. Is to recognize. The great African-American leaders in our community and recognize the opportunity that that is going to afford our youth and our young people. Um, Mayor Lee as an African-American mayor of the city. Um, Chief Roman as an African-American police chief. Um, Tim Allen as an African-American sheriff. And now we have the appointment of an African-American superintendent in our city schools. And I'm so proud of the city. Um, and I want us to recognize. The folks who are in positions of power and in positions of leadership. When people talk about oppression and we, when people talk about. The institutionalized racism and implicit bias and the things that um. Happen on a day-to-day basis that as a white female. Uh. I'm, I'm, I'm not, uh, they don't affect me in my daily life. And yet I recognize the way that they affect, the way that these issues affect so many of my friends and colleagues. Um, the way that they affect my kids at Boys and Girls Club and their parents. Um, and our kids that were trying to graduate from high school. Um, Mayor Lee. I hope that in the near future, that there can be a conversation. Between the folks that that I just mentioned to talk about how do we as Roanoke City, what we can do right here in our city? Stop. The school to prison pipeline. How do we start in our school system? With educating um. Our our kids and making sure that our kids have opportunity regardless of skin color. Um, and regardless of background and regardless of uh economic. Um, availability and income and 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 access to resources. And I just applaud the fact that in the highest. Most powerful positions within our city, that four of those positions are being led. By strong African-American leaders right now. Um, and I'm so grateful. That we have that, that we have that in place and that we as Roanoke City have a unique opportunity. To take action. In a way that almost no other community in our, in our country has right now. So. Um, first off, it's a thank you. Second off. Uh, I wanted to say we hear you and appreciate the folks who peacefully protested to say that they had had enough. Um, and third, I want to say that I personally join you. In taking that action. Um, and anything I can do, Mayor Lee, to help facilitate conversation, to help move. Um, the conversation forward into an action plan. Um, I appreciate your leadership, Mayor Lee, um, and the leadership of the other folks that I mentioned. Um. You've been willing to step up. Eat a lot of criticism, take a lot of heat for the positions that you're in, um, but you also have unique. Access to information and power and to create change right now in this time, in this place. And 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 you are all here for a reason. So I just wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Price.
I um hadn't planned to to follow Ms. Davis because I think she has some summarized. So much of what we're all feeling and um. And I certainly. Commend. And thank those peaceful demonstrators. Who. Who were able to to articulate the pain and frustration. That we're going through. Not only as a community here in Roanoke, but across the country. And as my colleague, um, Bill Best Bitch says, you know. We're we're no, no strangers to peaceful protesting. And this is a very painful time and I'm, I'm trying to choose my words carefully because it's a very. Difficult thing to to talk about, especially. In this capacity. But I do feel. And understand the frustration and the anger. That so many people across our country and right here at home are are feeling. Certainly, we do not condone violence. And we certainly do not. Condone any, any acts. That demonstrates against anyone, especially. People of color and African-Americans and black and brown people everywhere. And I will just simply say this, as I have said so many times before. You cannot address. What you don't first acknowledge. And we all collectively have to acknowledge, yes, we have issues. We have racial biases that we have to acknowledge. And in order to to address them, we have to to be able to name them. We have to be able to identify them and we have to be able. To to recognize. That we all have some issues that we got to work on. When I talked with my family this weekend and my sons, my son-in-law has told me how they're profiled and how they're followed and. And how they don't feel comfortable and it's so many things. That they have to do in order to try to keep themselves safe. But I will say that here in in our beautiful star city. Thank God, we do have some initiatives that we can continue to capitalize. I've been receiving notes and messages and. Phone calls from so many people about we have, we we cannot just keep on. Throwing lip service. We have to actively. Work on the things that we know that are abundantly evident. We cannot allow, we can't expect the school system to work with our children alone. Michelle said it so eloquently, I I can't articulate the way she did, but. These are the kinds of things that we know we have some things that we've got to move forward. And enough is enough. God knows, I remember night the the summer of nineteen sixty-eight all too well. I don't want to see, ever see that again. So. I will do anything within my power. To bring my voice and many that I know are ready to continue. To find peaceful solutions. And let's just work here together. I know we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I I too want to thank um. Everyone who's been providing leadership, not only during these times, but prior to them and. Especially to our intergenerational leaders, um, not only in the African-American community. Or Hispanic community, um. All people of color who've been so terribly impacted by everything that's happening. I heard someone say recently that. It's not really accurate to say the system is broken. Because the system was built this way. And so we as a city have to create a new um way of being. And uh, I don't really have words, but I I did want to share. A piece with you um, with permission. Written by Brian Hancock, who founded Soul Sessions in Roanoke. And uh, who's been a lifelong Roanoker, uh, was a very peaceful presence on Saturday and I. I feel like these words. Say more than I could ever say, uh, so I'd like to share them with you. This is called a Black Man's Tears. Have you ever seen a black man hold back his tears until he becomes a levee that breaks? Everything floods. Face shakes grimaces in pain as it fights to take the pain. Yet always running out of storage room confined to the space where feelings vacate plays it safe. If his voice raises an octave, it's viewed as a viable threat. In this skin, we savor our breath. In this skin, we ask what's next as a jog or a walk becomes fatal. So much stress. How many times have I fit the description? Face scraped against a brick wall without check of identification at all. Treated lower than low. Feel America snap my neck. Ah, yes, the tree still bears strange fruit. Have you ever seen a black man hold back his tears? Have you felt the cold blackness shrill as we pretend not to feel? As if pretend not to hear. But I still shout, I'm here, I count. I feel these tears and this pain that hits harder than hammers to Christ. This pain is real and it's nothing nice. Have you ever seen a black man hold back his tears? Just know that I feel and behind this mask, I'm real and you cannot rob me of my tears. You cannot con me, I want a new deal. Cause my feelings are not urban legend. I am not to be disrespected. See, I belong to someone. These are my tears. This is my life. This is my heart. Not to be negotiated and not to be stood upon. I have seen a black man's tears. I felt them on my forehead from my father when I lost my brother. Warm as they trickle down and he clutched me, carried me when I couldn't stand. I didn't make this game, but it demands that I fall into a character as a criminal, a bandit, as a demon. Lies blatant and subliminal. But you all don't hear me, though see me. As I shed these tears. Feel me in all of my seasons because there should be no reason. To believe that I cannot be. Brian Hancock. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, any other? Comments? If not, we'll go on to. Vote on uh. Ten B. Are we, are we ready to call a roll? Madam Clerk.
Yes. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborne.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. White-Bourne.
Aye.
Mr. Best Bitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And. It is ratified. Thank you. Uh. Let me thank all of you for what you just said. Uh. Uh, that's why I'm proud to. To serve with the council. That uh. Do the things and feel the way that you do about our society and America. So I just. Uh, I'm just proud to be a part of it and be able to serve with each one of you. And uh, so. Thank you so much as we go forward. All right, uh. Ms. Callahan, we're at ten C.
That's correct, Mayor. Um, this was sent to you earlier this afternoon. This is the second item. This is a a resolution uh appointing members of the Roanoke City School. Board uh for terms. For three years, beginning July one, twenty twenty and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, if this is a motion and a second, the clerk can read the title of the pair. Thank you.
Phil Best Bitch, I move the resolution.
The second.
Ms. White-Bourne, a second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph for this resolution?
A resolution. This is C S Jamison and Natasha N. Saunders. As school board trustees of the Roanoke City School Board for terms commencing July first, twenty twenty. And ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
All right, let me just make one comment. I want to thank uh. Councilwoman Davis for her work in putting this together. Uh, the form was something new to us, at least it was new to me during this process and. I think uh, it gave us some insight that we haven't had before and uh. I just want to come in there on a good job and making it uh. It's making it very insightful and and so thank you for your organization and 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 that process. I think it helped us to come to a decision in which, you know, we've had some. We've had some tough decisions to make, but this process really helped us to to put it all in front of us. So thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Thank you for saying that.
All right, uh. If there are no further comments. Or. Questions. We're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, we call a roll. Well, let me say, do we, well, you've already announced it, so please call a roll. I'm sorry. Mr. Vice Mayor, did you have a statement?
No, I was scratching my head.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes, so congratulations to, uh, Ms. Saunders and, uh, Ms. Uh, Jamison, Dr. Jamison, thank you so much. All right, we're now down to item number 11, motion and miscellaneous business. So I will just go down the line and just ask everybody and I'll start, I think I'll start with Mr. Best Pitch. I'll start this time with Ms. White Boyd. Any miscellaneous or motions or anything that you want to bring before the council?
Uh, no, sir. Other than, um, my request that I stated earlier, if there was some way we can send a resolution or a card on behalf of this council to, um, the, uh, George Floyd family. Not sure how that's done. I don't know if we've ever done it, but I understand there's other, um, local governments that are doing similar.
Well, we'll ask the city manager to take a look at that and if that is, everybody's in agreement to do that, I think we can, we can do that. I think that'd be a great gesture.
That's, that's all from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Osborne?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you so much, Mayor Lee.
All right. Ms. Price?
Uh, nothing. I just concur with, uh, with Ms. White Boyd's, uh, recommendation then a resolution, uh, or, or some acknowledgement to, uh, to recognize, to stand in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I think I've said about all my words today, Mayor Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Hi, Mayor. I want to thank you and my colleagues and so many citizens who've reached out to express your sympathy. Many of you may or may not know that my dad, Bill, uh, died very peacefully on Friday. Uh, it was an honor for me to be able to be with him. Um, so I just wanted to thank you all for, uh, your, your concern and your, your sympathy and your compassion. Uh, it means everything. Thank you.
Well, Vice Mayor, we, we're glad that that went well and that you could be able to be there. And let me commend you because you stayed up with what we were doing all while you were there. So, uh, we appreciate that commitment and dedication and I pray I'll still go out to you and your family as you go through this, this process. Thank you and take care of yourself. Uh, Mr. Best Pitch, Councilman Best Pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, I believe, uh, Vice Mayor Cobb is still there, which is, uh, something that we have really, uh, I guess in a way sort of stumbled upon uh, through this pandemic and having a new way of meeting and communicating with each other. Uh, if, if he didn't say so, no one would know that Mr. Cobb is not right here in Roanoke with all the rest of us. So, uh, maybe there are lots of ways that we can, we can use this sort of thing going forward. I, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilmember Davis for her comments, sort of clarifying the situation when it comes to the e-bike issue. And, and just to make sure that everyone understands, uh, that as the city attorney explained earlier, if we advertise that the public hearing is to consider banning the e-bikes, then we can also address any of the other options that are available to us in terms of whether we, uh, decide to, uh, have any sort of limits or regulation on e-bikes or the different types of e-bikes and so forth. If we advertise that we're only going to have a public hearing on one aspect of it, then that, then we're, that's the only thing we can consider. But if we, if we advertise the most extreme action that we could take, uh, we don't have to take that action. We can take something less. And I just want to be sure that everyone understands that regardless of how strong some people may feel about this issue or really any issue, it's always important for us to have these public hearings to make sure that every perspective is shared, that everybody has the opportunity to, uh, voice their opinion, uh, even though their opinion might be very different from mine or anyone else's. Uh, that's the, that's the real, uh, value of a public hearing within our democratic process. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that we kind of got that out there, that we're, we're not predisposed at this point, to my knowledge, and I, I think I could speak to everybody on council, we haven't made up our minds about this issue. We need to have a public hearing so that we can hear from the public and decide, uh, what's the best thing for our city, uh, overall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this meeting. Uh, I guess we just have one other little thing to take care of and we're just about done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, let me add, let me add one other thing, just as sort of a housekeeping thing. I've discovered that if you use your keyboard, uh, when your microphone is muted and you just want to unmute temporarily just to say aye or no or however you want to vote, all you have to do is press the spacebar and hold it down for a little bit. Actually, you hold it down as long as you want, I guess. But it's much easier than, uh, finding out where to click the, the little microphone symbol on or off. Just hold down the spacebar and, and if, if you're using some other type of device, I don't know how that works, but on a, on a P board, you can just use the spacebar. Thank you.
Mr. Best Pitch, I would say that it depends on how old your iPad is also, because my iPad does not do that. I'm sorry.
Well, a lot of things depend on how old we are, Ms. White Boyd, but let's not get into that today.
That's a true statement there, Miss Best Pitch. All right, uh, uh, Ms. Uh, White Boyd, have another statement? Do you want to say something?
I forgot to say, I forgot to, uh, announce that I was appointed to the Lieutenant Governor's, uh, uh, Racial Disparities on COVID-19 Task Force. We had our first meeting last night with the Lieutenant Governor and about 20 others. So we're hoping to come up with some recommendations on how to deal with, uh, COVID-19, uh, its disparities in, in the, in the, um, black and, and brown communities, which is where it has been impacting us the most. So I'm happy to, to join that task force and I will keep you apprised, um, of our efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And since you mentioned it, I'm glad that, uh, we got two representatives from out this way serving on that task force. Sherman Lee Jr. is also a member of that, of that group. So I think that'll serve us well. So when they talk about a lot of things in, in Richmond now, they were a member of Southwest Virginia. We're expecting you all to make sure that our bosses are heard of this. All right, and number B is Vegas is on certain authorities, boards and commissions and committees appointed by council. We're going to do that. First, I want to certify our closed meeting and I would ask, uh, I'm thinking, I'm in the cha, we're in the chamber, uh, someone to read a motion to bring us out of closed session. To certify our closed session. Does anybody have that?
I, I, I have it again.
Thank you.
I move that each member of Roanoke City Council certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under chapter 37 of Title 2.2 Code of Virginia, Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting conducted through electronic communication means was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And thank you. Uh, yeah. We will, uh, have the names, uh, that were placed in nomination. I'll ask Councilman Best Pitch, uh, to please place the names in nomination. And, uh, if you're in favor of them, will you please let us know by stating all nominees? And I will, uh, ask Mr. Best Pitch to please give us the names of those that are in nomination.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, the nominee is Chris Vale. For the Court Community Corrections Program, the nominees are Judge Gettis, Judge Hillary Griffith, John Varney, and Stephen Poth. For the Regional VASAP Program, the nominee is Deputy Chief Eric Charles. For the Civic Center Commission, the nominee is Thomas Powers Jr. For the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission, the nominee is Robert Frayland. And for Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, the nominee is Annette Lewis. Those are all the nominees for today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll and, and, uh, we all know what we need to do if we support them. Please let it be known by saying all nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
All nominees.
Ms. Davis?
All nominees.
Ms. Osborne?
All nominees.
Ms. Price?
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd?
All nominees.
Mr. Best Pitch?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. All right, let me again, uh, thank you all for this session today and I want, I pray I will continue to go with Vice Mayor Cobb and his family and Councilwoman Price. And you, as I mentioned this morning, is we're going to be praying for, uh, your family. Stay strong. If you need any of us, I'm sure we'll do whatever you need. Just give us a call and, uh,
Mayor. And thank you colleagues. Thank you all.
Okay. All right. All right, everybody be safe out there. And if there be further bend to this council, this regular session of city council is adjourned. Be safe.
God bless.